Call the Owatonna City Council meeting for February 7th, 2017 to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dodson.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Okaberg.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
And Mayor Coates.
Here.
We have all seven of the council and the mayor present.
All rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There being no corrections or changes to the agenda, I'd ask for approval of the agenda, I'd ask a motion for that.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Burbank, second.
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First thing on the agenda tonight is a couple of public hearings. The first one is 1.3.1. It's a public hearing for 2017 curb and gutter project, and we will go to the city engineer, Kyle Scho for this.
Good evening. This 2017 curb and gutter project affects White Oak Lane and Wolfberry Place out in Majestic Oaks, and Eagle Ridge Street, Hazeltine Avenue, and Boulder Crest Avenue in the Partridge Edition. This project is a result of petitions from homeowners. The assessment policy calls for over 35% of the homeowners to petition to the city. We received more than that for both. The feasibility report was presented to the council on, I believe it was January 7th, and then the, no, it wasn't January 7th, but we held a neighborhood meeting on January 10th, and then tonight before us is the improvement hearing. The total cost of the improvement is $653,132.44, and by the assessment policy on streets that are not currently improved, it's 100% assessable, so that would also be the proposed assessment amount. I'm available to answer any questions.
Dave? We'll now have a public hearing regarding these improvements, so we'll declare the public meeting open at 7:05. If you have any comments about this, would you please come to the table here in the microphone and sign in, and you can ask any questions you would like. Do you have a question, sir?
Yes, sir. I'm on.
That's fine, that's fine, go ahead.
It'll be on the next one.
Okay, sure, yeah, if you come up to the microphone here, that's what we ask people to do, so everybody can hear. And state your name for the record, please. Is that a good spot? That's a good spot.
Well, my name is Jim Wandaberg, I live on 430 Cindy Lane, which is in the middle of the Cindy Lane project. I've been there since 1985, and they put the street...
Hold on. This hearing is about a different improvement project. The next hearing will be about Cindy Lane project.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
No, that's fine, so if you could hold your comments to the next public hearing, which will be in just a few minutes.
Sorry.
It's okay. Does anybody have any comments about this project that involves White Oak Lane, Wolfberry Place, Eagle Ridge Street, Hazeltine Avenue, and Boulder Crest Avenue? There being none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Nate.
Brent, or, I mean, Nate.
Second.
Second by Brent, thank you. Now, we'll close the hearing at 7:06.
We need a vote on it.
We got to vote on it, don't we? I thought I just had the power to do that. All's in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, we'll close it, how's that sound, Kevin?
Perfect.
Great. Now, council, do we have any discussion on this? Any questions of Kyle? Therefore, the next thing on the agenda is 1.3.1.1, Resolution 717, approving the repair in order of the plans and specs for the project we just had a hearing on.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve, I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion?
Kyle, are they requesting that California curb up there?
This would be with our standard approach with a normal curb. Okay. I think the council's direction was that we wanted to stay with a vertical curb.
Right, thank you.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll go to item 1.3.2, the public hearing for the 2017 street and utility project. Go back to Kyle for this.
This is our annual catch-all project. This will affect Radell Place, 13th Street Northeast, 12th Street Northeast mound from Franklin to Selby, Bryan Avenue Southwest, Martin Street Southwest, Valley Avenue Southwest, Cindy Lane Southwest from Jeffrey to Young, the alley to the, excuse me, the west of Oak or Cedar, in behind Godfathers, and then an alley between Lincoln and Chambers, south of Agnes. We did hold a neighborhood meeting last Tuesday night on the 31st. Able to meet with a number of the residents. We did receive a petition or notice from 13 of the 16 residents on Cindy Lane requesting that this be delayed. The Cindy Lane was identified when we went through and did our pavement management, and raided all the streets. However, so it raided low enough to warrant having some work done on it. They're requesting that we delay this a few years. I don't see a problem with that. If council wishes, we can push it out three, four years. There's some spots that need patching that we can take care of. The streets beyond an overlay, that's why it was on this, but if you wish to push that section out into the future, I can support that. And it seems like the residents are in favor of that also, so. Total cost of the improvement is a little over $2 million, and the amount to be assessed on that is $462,000, so it's a little, little under 25% of the cost that would be assessed.
Okay, thank you, Kyle.
I'm available for any questions.
Okay, now we'll open the public hearing for this project at 7:09. Anyone that likes to come forward and speak about it can do so.
Again, I'm Jim Wandaberg, I live at 430 Cindy Lane, and it was, in reviewing where I live and on that street, I felt the street is not perfect. In fact, there's a frost boil down on the Young Drive end that was repaired once last summer, but I hope it will be repaired again this summer. Other than that, there was another one up by Jeffrey, which was repaired. Those are the two major deficiencies, in my opinion, in that street. It does have some cracks, but I don't believe it's bad enough to completely rip it out, substrate, four-inch bituminous, and replace it, and I interviewed 13 of our 16 residents. Well, actually 14, one was a no, but 13 were all yay, as far as trying to delay this project. I put it down for 2020, but again, that's going to have to be a discussion amongst this group, I guess. And that's my position, is I'd like to have it delayed.
Thank you, and that's the petition you got, Kyle?
Yes.
For writing this, okay. So, okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak about anything on this project?
My name is Deborah Fern. I was at the informational hearing, and I spoke with Jeff a little bit, but just a couple of concerns I want to bring forward. I live on Lincoln, so I live on the corner of the alleyway that's proposed for the alley being repaved. And for me, I guess the first thing is that it's a little shocking to get a proposed bill for 1,500 that I didn't get any input into. That's a little concerning to me as a homeowner. Secondly, I think a concern I have is that we're having to repave it, and I think, I think it was about three years ago, one of my neighbors came to me and said, "Why don't we get our trash picked up in the alleyway, it'll be easier?" And I thought, "Well, okay, we'll do that." But I believe that all that traffic going through there from all the different carriers caused it to disintegrate quicker, so I have a concern about that and just how that process goes. I mean, we're gonna, if I'm gonna have to pay a bill for 1,500, and we still have those trucks going through there, I mean, is that an issue elsewhere too? Or, I mean, it's done for the convenience, I think, of people. I mean, I'd be quite happy to put my trash out, even though I'd have to, you know, take it down the alley a little ways, but I think some of the concerns were with some of the elderly folks not wanting to move it to the main streets, so.
Kyle, can you respond to that?
You're correct, there is a lot of truck traffic.
Right.
And garbage trucks through that alley, and it certainly hasn't prolonged its life.
Right.
We had to post it, "No trucks" in the spring because it was in such tough shape, and we're looking at replacing it with what would be the same section as a street, so the, I wouldn't expect any more wear on the alley than I would if we ran those trucks down one of the streets, so.
So it's gonna be improved from what it was the last time it was done?
We know how much asphalt they put on, we don't know how much base was underneath it.
Okay.
So we're looking at regrading the base and putting asphalt, new asphalt down, so I believe so, you know, only time will tell. But like I mentioned, it's being built to the same standard as a street, so.
Okay. So you, I mean, if you lived there, you would say, "Go ahead and drive all those trucks"?
Well, ideally, we wouldn't have as many, but that's kind of the, you know, there's a number of carriers in town, and...
Right. We talked about that a little too, and how they go back and forth and so forth, so that was just my concern. If I'm being required to pay this money, I don't want it to be beaten up. I don't want another bill like this.
Well, and, when there is an assessment on a bituminous street like this or alley, it is 20 years before we can do another assessment project.
I'm planning to still be around in 20 years.
Right. So you do have, you know, and if we're able to, we would have put an overlay on it at about year 20 and get another 15 out of it, so.
But that, but this time that couldn't happen?
It's so, so beat up that we just can't do anything. The other option would be to go through and remove the bituminous and just leave it a gravel alley and, you know...
Right, and then it would have to be...
Bladed on occasion, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. The other thing, I don't think he's here, Elliot's not here, is he?
No.
Okay. Where I live, my neighbor has their sump pump draining, right, I mean, they're my next-door neighbor, and so all of that water is running down and into my basement, and I'm just wondering with the repaving, I think it was Elliot that said they could grade, that the grade on it is slanted down, but that they could do it different on that side? Does that make sense?
He was gonna check the grading, because he raised that concern.
So who do I need to follow up on that about?
I will.
Okay, all right, and I can get your number. And then, the other thing is just, you know, and I'm not really involved in politics, but for me, it just would be helpful to have the opportunity to have input before, instead of, you know, all this planning and everything's gone into it, and any suggestions for people like me that would prefer not to get this kind of communication, but to know ahead of time?
Well, and this is our process. We still haven't received a go-ahead from the council that they may or not give us...
Right, but that's gonna happen tonight?
More than likely.
Right, yes, and it'll go through, right?
Correct. And we do try to communicate our, our future plans, but...
Right. It's not a criticism, it's more just, as a homeowner, how can I...
Understand.
...be involved so that I'm not getting somebody else deciding what's best for me to pay?
And I would add, and you can put that assessment on your property taxes.
Right, well, that's the only way it can...
And not take the hit, you know, in one shot.
Yeah, that's the only way it'll get paid, but yes.
And we usually set those up so they're payable over a number of years, so it's not a whole, the whole amount at one time.
Right, I understand all that, but, you know, it's like with the schools, the school do levies, and I'm paying those, and those are added on, so, yeah. Okay, so not any really good suggestions about how I can...
Well, I think Kevin mentioned it, or Kyle mentioned it, we do try to, try to make sure people are aware of what's coming.
Right.
Obviously, it's, we've got a lot of streets in town, so it is tough to make sure everybody's aware, but...
Okay.
Kyle, we do, you are developing a list of roads that, kind of a list of...
In the capital improve, the five-year capital improvement plan, we do have them listed. I guess most people wouldn't be aware of that document, so...
So where is that at, in case I...
It's available online on our website, but, and it's fluid, it doesn't, you know, we try to identify the streets, you know, two years ago, this one probably wasn't on it.
Right.
But with our experience last spring, is how it got added, so.
Right, okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Rick Danielson, and I also live on Cindy Lane, and I was just, even though you might not do it this year, that it not be forgotten, because last year, there was a section, I would guess approximately two by maybe five or six feet, that was torn up by a snowplow and then had to be repatched. And of course, there are various patches along the way across this, and a lot of what I would call kind of dry mud cracks in various spots along the road. So even if you don't do it this year, please don't forget that at some point in time, we need this done, because even, even my next-door neighbor has a couple of holes at the end of his driveway that probably could use to be patched on Cindy Lane.
I would think if it's on Kyle's list, it probably isn't gonna go away. Okay.
We, we keep it on the list. We evaluate each quadrant of the city once every four years. The southwest quadrant was done in 2016, so it would be back for evaluation in 2000, would that be 19 or 20?
20.
20. So it, it will cycle back through, and...
Okay.
And we'll keep an eye on it.
And it's also kind of my understanding that you'd give us either, either an option of either pay upfront or either a five or a 10, whichever the council would decide upon to pay for it on property taxes, correct?
Correct.
And would it be a recycle, recycle of the, or is it just tear it all up and re-put it down?
In the case of Cindy Lane, it would be tear it all up and...
Tear it all up, okay.
The curb's in good shape, well...
Yeah, yeah, the curbs are cement, so I wouldn't expect them to go.
If there's any broken sections, they would be repaired. But for the most part, we'd be leaving the curb and replacing the aggregate base and then the bituminous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to discuss any of these projects? Seeing no one, I call for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Nate, a second.
Second.
Second by Doug. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll close the public hearing at 7:20. Now it's time for the council to have any discussion about it. Any questions of Kyle or on this matter? I get it.
Kyle, the concern I've got in regards to Cindy Lane, obviously, we spent a good deal of time and energy evaluating the streets. This was one that was deemed as in poor quality. I just want to make sure that we're not gonna be spending a lot of labor and material costs over the next three years to do something that we probably should repair right now.
It, it's a residential street, you know, it did rate low, but another two, three, four years out of this, I don't expect to see a lot of maintenance costs. If we do see a lot of maintenance costs, you'll see a comeback on the annual repair list, so, you know, there, it sounds like there's a frost boil that can be patched out there, and a few other potholes that need to be filled, and we'll take care of that in May or early June when we start doing our patching, so I, I think we'll be okay.
Okay, thank you. I do have a procedural question. If the council chooses to remove Cindy Lane from this project, do we need to have a motion to that regard?
I would think so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're looking for a motion? Turn music.
One second, Nate, do you have a quick question?
Yeah, I just want to revisit the Godfathers' alley, so have we satisfied most of the concerns with regard to doing bituminous in that alley, or where are we at with that?
You know, the one property owner is concerned about using bituminous versus wanting concrete, and he's taking a long-term view, and, you know, for the city, the costs are considerably more for concrete because of our $52 a foot cap. You know, he's right, concrete will last longer, but lifecycle costs, you know, on a lower volume road like that, I think the bituminous is, the bituminous is what I'm recommending. I am recommending that instead of our standard four inches, we bump that up 25% to five because of the concerns over truck weight. You know, it's, it'd be hard to justify concrete in that alley, and, and I've talked to that property owner a number of times about it, and, you know, he'd prefer to see concrete, but with the increased cost, it's, it's hard to justify, you know. We, when we look at other areas, like North Cedar, where the traffic volume is quite a bit higher and quite a bit heavier, we are going with concrete, because the lifecycle costs there makes sense.
Dave?
I would make a motion that we approve the, we're not at resolution point yet, are we? We're at the public hearing, closed public hearing.
We close the public hearing, so now go ahead.
And remove Cindy Lane from the project list.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to remove Cindy Lane from this project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion on that? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Cindy Lane has been removed from this project, so now we have a Resolution 8-17 to approve the repair and order plans that have just been presented minus Cindy Lane. So do I hear what's the council's wishes on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve, Resolution 8-17, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? You know, Kyle, do you have any guesstimate as what that removal saves in the...
I was, just one second, I'll, I believe I've got the... About $150,000, so it would lower, reduce to about $1.85 million on the project. And some, some of that cost is water main that will be reimbursed by OPU, so there's a good, good share of that.
I suppose the next question is, can we use some of that money for some other projects, then?
I think finance director would tell you that I was pretty aggressive with my street listings this year. Normally, we shoot for about $1.5 million, so at one point, a little over 1.8, I think we're, I don't want to go ask for more money.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go on to the finance report, and we'll go to Kevin. We have two finance reports, one for January 24th and one for February 7th, 2017.
All right, the January, $22,119,000 to Egg Power for a tractor more for waste water treatment plant, $30,075 to Most Contracting for the 222 North Cedar on the grant program, $25,312 for Restoration Services, that is at 143 West Broadway, grant program. Other expenditures are $144,133, making the total expenses of $221,640.22. And the February recap would be to I State Truck Center for a Freightliner, $109,809, Tollmaster for a hoist plow, Sanders scraper, $119,858, Steel County Auditor, fourth quarter LEC, $50,660, Wenzel Construction for 2016 street and utility, $49,758. Owatonna Area Chamber of Commerce, 95% lodging tax, $20,725. Other expenditures would be $258,315, taking that total to $609,127. HRA Section 8 payments of $75,353, making the total expenditures for February of $684,480.33.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. We've heard the finance report for January 24th and February 7th. Do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Motion by Dave Burbank, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okaberg. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, that is grouping of minutes, permits, and licenses, board and commission reports, monthly reports, contracts and agreements, and other miscellaneous items, all grouped together for a single vote by the council. The council has received these and reviewed them, so what do I hear? Do I hear motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent Svenby to approve the consent, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll go on to action items. The first item is 3.2.1. It's the final reading for the proposed ordinance 22-16 to amend Appendix A of fee amounts, and we'll go to Chris for this.
Thank you, Greg. Council had approved this first and second reading of this proposed ordinance, however, we had a typographical error in one of our fee amounts. The assessment search was shown as $25 when it should have been 15, so this process is recommended by the city attorney to correct that error, and staff would recommend approval with the fee amount being $15.
Okay. Any questions of Chris? Any none, any, any further discussion? Do you hear a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff, do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Voss, any further discussion? There being none, this is an ordinance, so we'll have to have a roll call, so Jeanette.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
Rainey.
Aye.
Svenby.
Aye.
Voss.
Aye.
Okaberg.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
All members voting aye.
Okay, motion approves, it's approved. Next on the item, we go to resolutions. The first one is 3.3.1, it's Resolution 9-17. It's to set the date for a public hearing to establish a development district number eight and a tax increment financing district number 8.1. And we'll go to Troy for this.
Staff has been working with the developer on a redevelopment project for the old Owatonna Care Center property that's on 18th Street Southwest. The use of tax increment financing to assist in demolition costs and soils corrections for the redevelopment project on the site is being proposed. The proposed project calls for the construction of a 37-unit market-rate apartment building with tuck-under and detached garages on the site. Development district and tax increment financing plans are included in your packets there. Now, there is consulting fees for the TIF financing, and that'll be paid through the HRA. Administrative costs have been figured into the TIF plan, so the consulting expenses can be reimbursed through the life of the TIF district. So staff would recommend adoption of the resolution authorizing the setting of the
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next on the list is 3.3.3, resolution 12-17. It's another parking restrictions resolution for Lamond Road from I-35 Bridge to Kim Lane Southwest. And back to you, Kyle.
Again, we're using municipal state aid funds to construct this. In this case, we are going to be going with a narrower road section that is not going to allow for on-street parking, so we are requesting no parking from I-35 Bridge to Kim Lane Southwest. It will provide for 12-foot driving lanes and two-foot recovery zone on both sides. We are also looking at the speed limit being 30 miles an hour on this stretch of road. So, we recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion?
Just one comment on that. I've been asked that we're restricting parking going from Kim to 35 Bridge, and what are we making the adjustments for people that park to go sledding down by the country club?
They won't be able to.
Park in Nobles Park driveway.
It's already no parking signs there, so they shouldn't be parking there legally anyway.
Answer your question, Tom. Okay, there's a motion, a second on the floor. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is 3.3.4, resolution 10-17, deeming the Arnold House property occupied by structural substandard building. That's a whole lot there, Troy. Let's explain that to us.
Okay, so the next, actually, the next two things are relative to the redevelopment of the Arnold House. One's a resolution and one's a predevelopment agreement. In discussions with Arrow Ace Hardware about the redevelopment of Arnold House, it's been determined that it's more beneficial for both sides if the demolition of the building and the construction of the parking lot is done by Arrow Ace as part of their project rather than having the city do it under a separate project. There's some costs and time savings in the design and construction of the project that would, if it were completed by the contractor, the project rather than the city, you know, would offer those benefits. To help meet the timelines for the project, the resolution and the predevelopment agreement allows the work to be done before the tax increment financing district is approved, and that'll come before you probably that first meeting in April. It is unlikely that TIF financing will be, or it's likely TIF financing will be in place by the time they do demolition, but when we talked about the timelines, they talked about maybe doing demolition as early as March, and in order to accommodate that, we would need this resolution just stating that the Arnold House property is substandard and would qualify for redevelopment TIF district before it's tore down. Because once it's tore down, and then you try to do a TIF district that no longer has the building to qualify for redevelopment TIF. So this is more of a precautionary step to accommodate some of their timelines that have been, they've been talking about in the discussions up to this point. So staff would recommend approval of the resolution and the predevelopment agreement to allow that timeline to be sped up if it's needed. It's quite likely that it may not be needed, but just in case it is, we needed to have these in place for that.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions of Troy? There be none. What are the council's wishes on this resolution?
Motion to approve.
And by Doug, to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next we go on to 3.4.1. This is a development agreement for the Arrow Ace Hardware, and we'll go back to Troy.
Yeah, this just specifies that they would, are acknowledging that they would be doing work prior to TIF district being approved if they choose to do so. And then, again, our plan when we talk timelines was that the TIF would be before the council that first meeting in April, so if they wanted to do something in March, you know, that they would, their agreement that they would do it before, knowing that the TIF would not be in place.
Any questions of Troy on this one?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next on the item is, an agenda is 3.6.1, the Owatonna Firefighters Relief Association. And we'll go to Chris on this one.
Thank you, Greg. Purpose tonight is approval from the council for a $350 increase in the pension amount for full and paid-on-call firefighters. Each year, the Relief Association reviews the percentage funded of the account. We had worked out in recent years some guidelines that allow the Relief Association to come before council when their retirement funds are at least 110% funded. So they have to maintain that as a minimum, and anything over that amount, they can come to the council and ask for an increase in their annual pension amount. Currently, I think they're at about, prior to the increase was about 125%, and now, even with this increase, they will still be over 119% funded. This evens out the increases for the city and also makes for a gradual increase, you know, in light of market fluctuations and the like. So, this is primarily, or almost entirely funded by the 2% insurance premium the city receives through the state of Minnesota, so staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions of Chris?
And Todd Ulrich, he's the president of the Relief Association, or treasurer, I'm sorry. He's also here if you have any other questions.
Okay. Any questions for Chris or Todd?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is 3.6.2, authorized purchase of the property at 130 East Fremont Street. And we'll go back to Troy.
The Housing and Redevelopment Authority has been pursuing opportunities to eliminate and redevelop blighted areas. We've identified the 100 block of East Fremont as one possible location where we have some blighted properties. The city currently owns the property at 122 East Fremont, and we've been renting that out to recoup some of the costs before redevelopment project would be done. We've also purchased the property at 134 East Fremont last year, and that will be a property that we will demolish this year. We've been talking with the owner at 130 East Fremont and have a purchase agreement to purchase the property contingent on city council approval. The purchase price is $10,000, and that would be paid forth by the HRA. The HRA has approved purchasing that actually last year. The property went through an estate, so there were some legal things that had to be settled before they were able to sell it to the city, and we are at that point now. The house is a small house built in 1871, has been vacant for over a year, and it does sit across from Alexander Lumber and across the alley from Tim's Auto. This is an area that's Zone B-3 central business district and would be a good location for redevelopment. We have talked to businesses in the area that have expressed some interest in needing some more land for expansion, and so this makes for a good area to develop from residential to commercial. All expenses, including demolition costs, would be covered by the HRA. We're estimating demolition to be between $10,000 and $15,000. We would do that in conjunction with the property at 134 East Fremont too, to get a better price because they sit right next to each other. So staff would recommend approval to purchase the property at 130 East Fremont Street.
Thank you, Troy. A quick question, is demolition planned for these houses immediately, or?
Yeah, as soon as we can close on it, we typically do the asbestos abatement, and then we'll package a couple of them together and try to get a good bid price for demolition.
Thank you. Any other questions for Troy? Dave?
Troy, you've indicated, or we're aware now that that area, you're kind of concentrating on that area for redevelopment. Are you at liberty to disclose what type of businesses have indicated an interest in expanding down there?
Well, we don't have a specific plan. It's more of getting the blighted properties out of there. The businesses we've talked to in the area, there's a couple of them in the area that have expressed some interest in having some more property for their business, but we don't have anything planned per se.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? There's an action on the table here that's what the council's wishes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent Svenby to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug Voss. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the action items on our agenda tonight. Now we open up the floor to public comments. If you have any comments, please come to the microphone at the table, sign in, and limit your comments to two minutes to items that are not on the agenda. All right, he's got his stamp.
Roger Wasick. Couple of quick comments here. Stick to less than two minutes here. I'm working on Owatonna's weed ordinance. It's pretty much unworkable as written, and I don't know if anybody remembers, it was quite some time ago Mike Johnson had an article to this effect in Owatonna People's Press when he talked about weeds by definition. And I start with that. Weeds, all noxious weeds as defined in Minnesota Statute 18.77 and 21.72, as they may be amended from time to time. Great. That's why we have the whole weed ordinance, is because of the state statute. But then he goes on, goes on in there. And all such useless and troublesome plants as are commonly known as weeds to the general public. That's the problem that makes it kind of unworkable. And the weed ordinance doesn't address safety triangles at intersections, and it's addressed elsewhere in the shade tree ordinance, nor does it address rain gardens, nor does it address flower beds, nor does it address gardens. And also, in my opinion, it doesn't adequately address woodlands, native wetlands, native prairie, and a few other things in there. The only reason I'm mentioning it is because I welcome any input. I'm trying to rewrite it to make it a little bit more workable, and you guys will have the final stamp on it, but if anybody has any input, I welcome any input. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Anyone else have any comments? Yes, sir.
Mike Noble. I'm affected by the Lamond Road project, and one of my concerns is the lack of parking in that area, because I know people are still going to want to come out there and start sledding, but I guess we'll just have to deal with it in the neighborhood somehow. And secondly, it's probably not this commission, or this council's responsibility, and I might be preaching to the wrong choir, but I would really like to see the power lines along Lamond Road get buried as a result of this project. It'd be the perfect time to be doing that, and there's a lot of distribution lines out there, and it's quite amassed. The lighting is on old wooden poles or the old high-pressure sodium lighting. It'd be a great time to beautify Lamond Road, make it more safe and more reliable from electrical service standpoint. So I know some of you sit on the utility commission, and so I just want to express that and get, make the public, or the people to be aware that I'd like to see something done about that at the same time, so.
Kyle, have you had any discussion with OPU about that?
I did get a note from Mr. Noble today about this issue, and I forwarded it to OPU. I have not received a response, so I will check with them. I know it's a high voltage line, so we'll see what they can do.
Kyle, any idea on ballpark figure we'd be looking at for an improvement like that?
I don't deal with electricals, so.
Parkin, I don't know if we have a good answer for that.
You're not going to guess at that one?
Anyone else have any comments this evening?
I did get a note back from Mark, so I'll just read it. It says, "I believe OPU talked to Mike Noble last year and let him know we are only planning some gas system modifications on Lamond Road, but we'll continue to talk to him and ask him if he can review that again."
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll go to council comments, and first up is Nate. Do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight?
Dave?
Nothing tonight.
Kevin?
Nothing tonight.
Brent?
Nothing tonight.
Wow, Doug, you must have something for us tonight. No, thank you. Jeff?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
We did have the opportunity to go up and do some lobbying at the state Capitol, and there is several bills that are being introduced for Highway 14. We'll see if we get any place with them or not, if there's some funds available. And we continue to push for LGA, and I know that our representatives from our area are supporting the LGA bills, so it's a long way to go. We'll see how far we get.
Thank you. Chris?
Just a reminder about that Owatonna forward meeting on Friday, February 10th, I think, 8:30 it starts over at the hospital meeting room. Council was invited along with some other local elected officials where we can give some input to that process, so just a reminder.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And I'd like to add on to what the mayor said. There were six of us that took time out of our schedules, work schedules, to go up to St. Paul on Wednesday, and I think it had quite an impact on our legislatures that six of us actually come up there to talk to them during the day, and I think they listened to us this time, and they've signed on to some of the things that are important to improve in the city here, so. Thank you to all of you that came up there and helped lobby for that. I guess we're done, so I look for a motion to close.
So moved.
Motion by Kevin to close, a second.
Second.
Second by Doug. Any discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're done. Mike?